To your attractions, to your museums, to your historic homes, these types of things. So, I know that's kind of like drinking from a fire hose. It's a lot of information. This is not my first rodeo, as you might be able to tell. This is what we do all over Texas. I'm here to answer any and all your questions, but also I want to make emphasis that I am available to you all long after we leave tonight, and I have plenty of business cards to leave with you. I have great conversations with a lot of your other folks here, including Sheri and some of your hoteliers. So please consider me a resource and obviously a supporter of Nacogdoches.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Absolutely.
Very interesting presentation. Do we have any questions or comments from anyone that's here tonight for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, if not, council, any questions or comments?
The difference between a visitor and a tourist.
Yes, sir. So, a tourist, anyone from outside the city or the county. Now, I think sometimes where we want to be careful is, are they a tourist or are they a tourist who is staying overnight?
Right.
Because if someone comes in from Lufkin for the day, yes, they are a tourist while they're here, but if they're going right back to Lufkin that same day, then they're not engaging in any meaningful way to produce overnight hotel activity. So, an otherwise hotel tax eligible item to fund if it's an activity or a festival or an event.
Yeah, and the meeting and banquet rooms, they have to be on a property that has bids, right? To be considered local tax.
As an applicant, you mean if someone were to come ask for funds? Not necessarily. If someone had a meeting space, for example, and they came to the council and said, "Look, we're going to be hosting this event. Here is the attendance numbers we anticipate. Here's the advertising we've done well outside of Nacogdoches. This is where we, you know, we have people coming from." Maybe even you have advanced registration numbers that prove that up. Well, if they can show that, "Look, we're going to have some direct impact on producing hotel nights here in Nacogdoches," whether that's their hotel or not, then that's really what we care about, and they could be eligible for funding. Yes, sir.
And it doesn't have to be like a civic center, exhibition hall?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
No.
Well, thank you. That was a lot of good information for all of us.
Well, you're very welcome. You're very welcome.
And doing that. And I understand you'd like a photograph of Garner?
If we can do that.
Of course.
If we can. I'm not sure how often you all do that, that kind of thing.
We love it.
Okay, good, good, good.
That's not a problem at all for us.
Yeah, I want to memorialize her first evening with the council. Hopefully not a lot.
Sheri, you want to join? Come on. Oh, I get the phone. You all go ahead and have dinner and just come back later. You can sit with me.
Okay.
You might know the name Feldman.
Oh, yeah.
Feldman. I don't want to cover you all up.
Are you talking about me? I know. She's adorable. Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
You all enjoy your meal.
I was going to go to you.
Oh, me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Darn it. Perfect, thank you.
We all have a great visit.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
So glad you came.
No, I thank you absolutely. Thanks for everything I did.
Babies at City Council. We need to make that happen more often. Or good babies. Yes, we can do. Okay, we're now going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Consider confirmation of naming committee's recommendation to name new loop on La Nana Creek Trail, the Frances Schaffner Memorial Loop. Mr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Anderson, representing the facilities naming committee of yours, and I have a good thing to talk about, too. There was a recommendation, or a request, really, I'm assuming jointly, since on the other folks' letterhead, from both the Bonita and La Nana Creek Committee, if I got that right, and Historic Nacogdoches, Inc., to name this northern loop, which is on the map that you can see, which is currently intended to be the northern entry point. We hope that the trail system will never reach completion, but this will be a major part of it, and will, as the map indicates, as a possible terminus point, will have parking also, so that it's an access point. So it's a significant part of the trail. And the request was that it be named for Frances Adams Schaffner, who participated in a variety of ways. As you read in the paper, if you read today, they quoted the letter, which spelled it out better than I can, and I brought the article with me and can read it to anyone who's not familiar with her and her history and contributions to Nacogdoches. I'll be glad to do that if you would like. Other than that, the proposal of naming it that way was reviewed by your committee under the requirements of the policy which you established roughly five or six years ago, so that there now is a standardized procedure. It met every one of the required criteria, and to step away from the criteria, I cannot imagine a better person for whom it could be named. So, that is the recommendation of the committee, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any comments from people that are here first? Okay, if not, council, any questions?
No.
John, I agree with you, and Clay's letter was very, very well-written.
Yes. It said it all, so I don't need to say it anymore.
Absolutely, absolutely. Frances was, I think, one of our city's greatest assets, and I can also think of no more fitting tribute than this to her. And she was a remarkable woman and is dearly missed, so. The chair will entertain a motion if one of you would like to.
Motion to confirm the naming committee recommendation to name new loop on La Nana Creek Frances Schaffner Memorial Loop.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. Agenda Item Number Seven. Consider agreement for services from SC Tracking Solutions for Cross-Connection Data Management. Mr. Bartlett, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Steve Bartlett, City Engineer. Have tonight for your consideration and discussion is an agreement from a company called SC Tracking Solutions to help us with our cross-connection data management. Staff has been underway with implementing a program. It's basically an agreed action we had from TCEQ, as you've seen in some of your council updates, and certainly in the media as well. We were visited by TCEQ a number of months ago. They critiqued our backflow program, our cross-connection program, and have asked us to up our game a little bit, and rightly so. So we've been working on that process as you've gotten updates. Part of that process was to implement a much better and up-to-date record-keeping system, and right now we pretty much use a rusty file cabinet. And that's kind of failed us, or maybe we failed it, but it has certainly left us deficient, especially when we get audits and they come and want to look at our files, and not all the papers were in the files, and so staff has struggled with that citywide in getting all this together. So one of the things we propose is to begin a database management system. Now, again, this applies only to commercial counts. Residential counts are not affected by this, and this will only apply to commercial counts that have reduced pressure zone or testable apparatus, which is certainly a lot of them. So just to remind you of what basically happens if you're a commercial business and you have any kind of hazard connection potential at your business, and that could be a doctor's office, it could be a restaurant with a carbonated drink machine, it could be a funeral home. You're required to have cross-connection controls and backflow prevention to protect our system from accidentally getting contaminants backwards in the distribution system. So several options certainly exist, and again, we started with a file cabinet-type record system, all the way to web-based management. And so after reviewing this in great detail, staff has chosen this kind of web-based or cloud-based management system. This will allow us to produce records on demand when TCEQ shows up. We can literally hit a button and print those or show them on the screen, and we will have them at our fingertips no matter where we are. So we think those are advantages. We did review the products and the services of several companies. Their business models all vary a little bit. It's kind of a unique area of business, but staff has chosen a firm that we think suits the needs the way we want to operate. And again, that's SC Tracking Solutions. They're out of Rockwall, Texas. They're a Texas-based firm, started in 2012. So they're a relatively young firm. This is a no-cost system, and how does that work? Well, how can they operate with no cost? The way this happens today is when a tester, like in this picture, comes out and tests your backflow preventer, you as a business owner have to pay for that service and then turn that report into the city, and in most cases, that tester delivers that report to the city, and we keep it in a file and we check you. Annually, we send you a letter saying, "You need to do this again. You need to do this again." And so that's the process. What this will do is those testers will then register on this web-based system, and then they will upload a report or fill out a report online instead of bringing us a paper copy. So by registering online, we're able to do some things that we quite honestly have not done a good job of, which is check these testers to make sure their licenses are current, their insurance is current, and their testing equipment has been updated annually and inspected. So part of what SC Tracking will do for us is verify these testers, the licensed testers as part of that. They charge them $11.95 to upload each report plus tax, and that is how this is funded, not by city dollars, but by the people who are actually required to have the testing. Their testers pay that fee. So if we are doing procurement or an agreement that doesn't really involve any finances as far as you and I are concerned here, why are we here to talk to you about it? And the reason is this $11.95 fee. We want you to understand that's the way it's going to happen, because there's certainly a possibility that may be passed along to the customer as part of an increased test fee. It's not a guarantee, but we felt like it's something that might happen, and you might hear that. So we wanted to come to you tonight to present this whole process and explain that's the way that we have tried to proceed. Again, SC Tracking started in 2012, and it's worked for a number of Texas cities. All their forms are based on Texas regulations. We did not only talk to a number of city references, Greenville, Sulfur Springs, Mount Pleasant, Tyler, Marshall, Pittsburgh. So in our area, they're certainly got quite a few cities they've been serving. Visited with two different groups at TCEQ, one of them, they came to visit here, and so they definitely spoke highly. They will not make recommendations, obviously, of firms, but they said they work with them every day. They have zero problems, and they approve their forms and use. So to us, that was a good recommendation, so. Staff believes that agreement with SC Tracking can really improve our regulatory compliance, and that's the reason we're doing it, and we hope that it can reduce the needed amount of time that we spend on this. We're seeing, we're going to see an increase in man-hours to implement this program, because we're going from about 100 files to 600 or 700 or 800 files yet to be determined, so. Plus some more annual inspections for us and some more upkeep. So we're hoping this can really help us, or we're already kind of strained with time to do this, that this will help us get it done at no cost to the city. Mayor, after comments from the public, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from anyone that's here? Okay, council, questions, comments?
So you said 600 or 700 future contracts at about $12 apiece. Was that $7,000 or $8,000 a year?
In testing fees?
In fees that will go into SC Tracking.
That's probably a reasonable estimate. At this point, we don't know the final number.
But somewhere around there. So that's what we would forego in revenue, which is, I mean, it'd probably be more than that, try to do it in-house.
Well, right now, we don't charge for that.
Yeah.
So that's correct. So of course, we're not charging for it again, but yes, those people would.
Okay.
That's correct.
I have a question. I missed commercials, companies that need test. How would that be?
Well, the process is, and let me back up. If you remember, some council meetings a few months ago, we came to you for some funds to do CSI inspections. Sounds like a TV show, but they were customer service inspections. And so what happens is every business gets this inspection, and we walk in, or the inspectors walk in and say, "You have devices or connections that need protection." Maybe a mop sink that they've kind of hose-hooked to. Typical ones are carbonated drink machines, have to have backflow preventers, or like I say, a funeral home's a good example, that has a lot of stuff that probably needs backflow preventers in it. So they establish that, councilmen, and they give them a list, and this inspection then is the foundation for what controls they need, because there are backflows inside the building and certainly outside the building. So once that's established, then they have to have any of those that are testable, and not all of them are testable. Some are hose-bib connections that aren't testable. Those have to be tested annually, and we'll track them and notify them. Did I answer your question with that?
And this is a yearly report from each company, each commercial company?
Yes, from every business must have every one of their backflow preventers that are testable tested each year. Yes, sir.
And besides that $11.95, they also pay another fee to the tester.
They are paying another fee to the tester, which could be $75 to $150, depending, I think, on the equipment and location. And that's where we've been doing. They've just been bringing the paper to us, and then we've been losing it.
So we're just providing a database to them right now, right?
We are providing the database, kind of concatenating all this in one central area. We're providing this database, and the way the database is funded is through an additional charge to those testers. That's correct.
Thank you.
Appears to be much more streamlined process. Any other questions? Okay, if not.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. The chair will entertain a motion.
Let's see. I make a motion to approve the agreement for services from SC Tracking Solution for Cross-Connection Data Management.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item Number Eight, Nacogdoches Convention and Visitors Bureau 2018 End-of-Year Report. Good evening, Ms. Morgan.
Good evening. Sheri Morgan, Executive Director for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is just our end-of-the-year report for the fiscal year ending 2018, September 30, 2018. On the first slide, our visitor count, we're conservatively at 12,600 walk-in visitors to the Charles Bright Visitor Center, which shows a 12% increase over the fiscal year 2017, and some notable international visits, which is even more notable, because we don't really advertise, we don't market internationally, so that's always a good thing. And we did have, and Mike Bay can attest to it, we did have a visitor about a month ago from North Pole, Alaska. So not saying it was Santa, but I'm not saying it wasn't. Request for information, we satisfied 5,500 requests for information. That includes the information that we send out to travel information centers around the borders of Texas. There's six of those, as well as individual requests for information. And that's a 7% increase from the year prior. Our paid print marketing, we had full-page ads three times in Texas Monthly, the same in Texas Highways. We advertised in County Line Magazine, two full-page ads in the Sawdust, two third-page ads in the Texas State Travel Guide, Texas Meeting Planners. NETTC is a regional cooperative advertising, or it's a cooperative entity, and this is their publication, that we took two full-page ads in, Texas Society of Association Executives, SFA Parents Day, and then the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce map ad. And finally, TACDB, which is the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau's, their Meeting Planners Guide. We took out a third-page ad listing, and a third-page ad and then a third-page listing, I'm sorry. That is a typo. Our total marketing expense for fiscal year 18 was $174,500. That did include some paid digital marketing as well. Social media marketing showed outstanding growth, especially in Facebook. EMV stands for earned media value, so the results that we attained in social media marketing for free had an earned media value that would have cost us in excess of $110,000 were we to go to an agency. That's just a way to put some money and to compare it to what our expenditures were in that above line of $174,000. You can see our top markets include our pre-designated drive markets. We've got Nacogdoches, Houston, Lufkin, Dallas, and Austin. With international hits is Mexico, United Kingdom, Germany, and India. Pretty consistent across Instagram and Twitter as well. On our website, for the fiscal year 2018, we had 95,000 unique users, which totaled 121,000 web visits. The first pie chart shows how those visitors arrived at our website. 77.9% was an organic search, meaning they typed in things to do in Nacogdoches, and they arrived at us. 12.4% were those that actually had our URL and directly typed that in. 8.2% was referrals, so that's a click-through on a link that's on the chamber's website or the city's website. And then the yellow is negligible. Those are people that are accessing our website via our social media platforms. The second pie chart shows that 85.9% are new visitors of those 121,000 web visits, and that's what we want to see. We want to always be serving our content to fresh eyes, and that's something that we're doing. In meetings and events, for the fiscal year 17, we had 35 meetings that we hosted here in Nacogdoches with an estimated economic impact of over $4.5 million. For fiscal year 18, we had 40 meetings and events with an EEI of $3,220,000. We had more groups, but those groups had different spending patterns, so the economic impact of those groups were different. We had more groups overall, but fewer stays. What we gained from it, which doesn't have a monetary value, but we have improved partnerships with the Expo Center and with Stephen F. Austin. Hotel occupancy showed an increase of six percentage points over last year. You can see, running from October through September, we were positive in our percentage of change up until August and September. That is consistent across the board in travel and tourism. It has to do with school start dates and just the trends of families and their travel patterns. But overall, at the end of the year, cumulatively, we were up six percentage points. And then the final slide speaks to, this is the first year that we have completed with the Fredonia Hotel being open. In 2015, there was a publication put forth about the projected economic impact that the opening of that hotel might have on the community. The first point that was outlined in that report was that anticipated annual sales in the first year would be 4.1 million. That metric was surpassed. Facility expected to create 90 jobs with an estimated annual payroll of 1.5 million, and that was surpassed. Their occupancy remains strong amidst our local market, and they've proven to be a tremendous asset to our leisure and sales market and a strong and reliable community partner. So kudos to the city government council that helped pave that, make that happen, because it certainly has given us an additional asset to promote to tourists. There's been a tremendous amount of organic press created, generated about the opening, and that staff over there is to be applauded for their consistent dedication to customer service and to being that willing partner, community partner. So well done, council. And that completes my fiscal year report.
Are there any comments from anyone here? No? Counsel, do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Morgan?
I have one quick question. You said there were 12,500 people that came to the visitor centers?
12,600 that we counted that crossed.
What was the, kind of, the age profile? Do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, that is something that we should probably start tracking. I will say that my perception of that is that it's traditionally a retiree market, so I would say 55 and over, but I will say, and Mike Bay can attest to that as well, that he's at the front desk as well, we have a younger demographic that comes through as well that would probably be more in that millennial travel market. But primarily, we're in that 55 and above, I would say.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Well, thank you, and please thank your staff for us. You know, the CBB is one of those organizations in town that we are so proud of and we're so fortunate to have.
Well, you have a tremendous staff that was already in place, and it has been nothing short of a blessing and a joy to step in and be able to work with them, so.
Terrific. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, receive annual presentation on the Historic Sites Department. Good evening, Ms. Sal.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jessica Sal, Assistant Historic Sites Manager. I'm hoping you all aren't getting sick of seeing me up here about individual projects, but today's presentation is more on what our department's doing as a whole and what we do throughout the year, because I know I've presented to you all about the Railroad Depot and Zion Hill and Oak Grove and things like that, which will be included, but this is kind of what we do on our day-to-day and what our year looks like. Just to kind of refresh you all on the buildings that we have, the city owns and maintains four historic sites. Excuse me. We have the Sternhuygh House Museum and Library on La Nana Street, the Nacogdoches Railroad Depot at the corner of West Main and Old Tyler Road. We have the Zion Hill Baptist Church at the corner of North La Nana and Bodark, and then the Dirch Taylor Historic House and Gardens on North Street. These buildings are all very unique and beautiful, and they're great tourist destinations, but they're also a great place for people to learn about the Nacogdoches history, especially the school kids that live here and the people that have been here their whole lives. The buildings are relatively close in distance. We're all within a few blocks, which makes my life pretty easy. It's not too far to get to either one, any of them. And also, in the grand scheme of history, they're all relatively close in time period, because that's when Nacogdoches was really growing and expanding, you know, from the 1830s to 1914, which is my youngest building. But each one is unique and different. We can go over topics as far as, you know, 1830, high society in Nacogdoches and politics. We can talk about transportation and the economy, farming and agriculture, and then, of course, African-American history, architecture, religious history. So they're all beautiful, but they give me a lot of opportunities to talk to the public about so much of our history. So we're very lucky to have all of them. And of course, these aren't the only historic buildings in town. We have a lot of great historic sites and museums and older buildings, and all of our museums and cultural organizations really work together, so we're very lucky with that. The mission statement for the Historic Sites Department is written up there. I won't read it all to you, but really, our cornerstones are to preserve our buildings, the artifacts within them, and then, of course, the stories that go along with them. Because artifacts are great, but the buildings, we consider our biggest artifact, because if the buildings aren't there, the stories, and of course, the people, were still here, but we don't have a place really to tell them. So we preserve our buildings, all of our artifacts and our stories, and then we promote our history, whether it's to the tourists that come through Nacogdoches or to all the Nacogdoches ISD fourth graders that I get every year, crammed into four days. It's a lot. But we really want to make sure we preserve those buildings and that history and then tell people about it, because kind of what's the point of having it if I'm not shouting it from the rooftops that we have it? So we do a lot of promotion, a lot of preservation. We have a relatively small staff. I am the only full-time person for historic sites, and then I have three part-time museum assistants, which are all wonderful. They go above and beyond, and I'm very lucky that I have three that have been here quite a while and are still planning on staying. They are SFA students, SFA grads, and one is married to an SFA student. So they will be here for a while, and they really go above and beyond. They constantly ask what additional things they can do. They bring new research projects that they want to delve into, so I'm very fortunate with that. So we have staff that works very hard and is very dedicated, but there's still only four of us. And so we're very fortunate to have a big group of partners that partner with us for our bigger projects. I've listed the major groups, but I've I've listed the major groups, but of course, there are a lot of individuals in Nacogdoches that are kind of my buddies and my family have put together now to support our department. But our main partners, of course, are the Friends of Historic Nacogdoches that really help us with Oak Grove Cemetery and all the projects that go on there. The Nacogdoches County Historic Foundation that spearheaded the Zion Hill project for years and still does two fundraisers per year to help with that project. The Nacogdoches Public Library and their One Book One City program, which I know was hugely successful for them, and we've kind of keyed into that, and it's been great for us. The East Texas Research Center at SFA really helps with research. I'm not a genealogist by trade, but they can find pretty much anything I'm looking for, which is great. They also help us with a lot of the research when we're putting in these permanent exhibits and when people call me wanting to know information about their great-great-grandpa and wants a map of his land tract, which we don't keep on site, but the ETRC does. So they're super helpful. And then the SFA Department of History really helps as far as manpower. We put those undergrads to work. A lot of them are out there cleaning headstones at Oak Grove Cemetery. We have a lot of the grad students that do semester-long projects with me. And then Dr. Perky Beisel, who is a public history professor, really spearheads the headstone cleanings. And she's also a friend, a part of Friends of Historic Nacogdoches, so she's in my office a lot, which is great. We have, our annual visitor numbers for 1718 were 5,844. Those are the people that came through the museums and actually signed in our guestbook. I would venture the numbers are a little higher, but, you know, because sometimes we have tours that my museum assistants can attest to, that we have people that are back-to-back-to-back all day long. Sometimes people sneak in in the middle of a tour, you don't get them to sign in, so we miss some people, but those are the numbers that our documents back up. It's on an upward swing, which is always great. Our number of scheduled tours and kind of the bus tours are down, but despite that, our walk-in tours and the people that walk through downtown Nacogdoches and just kind of find us is on the upward swings, which is great, because we were a little worried when some of the school tours stopped coming just because of their budgets and scheduling and things like that, but our numbers have continued to rise, which is wonderful. We are open Tuesday through Saturday from 10 to 4, which is when we get a lot of the walk-in tours. And then on top of that, we have annual events every year. We have our Summer Scavenger Hunt and our Pioneer Day. They're kind of our end of summer, early fall activities. They're a lot of fun. We have our Lob-Lolly Model Train Exhibit that is up right now, and if you all haven't been to the depot, I really encourage you to go. The exhibit's incredible. We've all been talking back here about how fun it is. This is an event that is 100% done by volunteers. I have a few men that are retired that have collected trains for 50 or 60 years, and they set up this display for a month before we even open. Our opening weekend, which was two weekends ago, we had 550 people through the door in two and a half days. I think now with last weekend as well, we've had almost 1,000 people, and then we're open this weekend as well. It's really fun. They've really embraced the Nacogdoches portion of it, too. It used to just be kind of model trains. Now they've branded one as Dolly's Diner. We have a Fredonia Hotel billboard that lights up. There's a Bank Horse South. It's all very cute, but it's also very, it's great for Nacogdoches. It brings in a lot of numbers to the building, and it makes the building feel alive, which is wonderful. We have an annual Christmas event, which is a Saturday. We do 'Tis the Season, which is a 1842 Christmas. If y'all drive past Stern-Huyeh at night, the front of the porch is wrapped in a cotton sheet, and then we have some silhouettes that are backlit, so it looks like we are partying all night, which is what Adolphus Stern would have done in his day. And then we also have our annual sugarcane event in January. So we do a lot of stuff, which is great. It really adds another aspect to the museums, because of course, you can come in for a tour with your family, your friends. You know, we can tell you all sorts of history, but when you come to the Dirch-Taylor Museum and there's a blacksmith actually working, it really brings the museum alive and makes people understand that this is how life was. When you see Stern-Huyeh lit up like an 1842 Christmas, you can envision people actually living there, and this is kind of how they lived and what Nacogdoches was like. So we like doing the everyday open house and, you know, letting people see the museums, but really bringing it alive at special events really resonates with people, so we enjoy doing that. If those weren't enough, we do a few more things as well. We have quite a few big ongoing projects that we're doing. A lot of those are the ones that we really lean on our partners because they're, they're big projects that go on for a number of years or months and require a lot of man-hours. We have the continued restoration of the Zion Hill Church that I've presented to you all about a few times. We are still full steam ahead on that one and working with our architect and city staff and THC to make sure we can keep going with that one. We've been giving a lot of love to Oak Grove Cemetery lately. I know y'all had a presentation about the Oak Grove Fence, which all the restoration and work on that was done recently. We've been putting up directional signage in Oak Grove Cemetery. We have seven smaller signs that were put in. It's the second picture on the display that mark some of our most historic graves and kind of the people that most visitors go to see. We have one for Adolphus Stern because people go visit the Stern-Huyeh Museum and they'll want to see his grave, so his has an individual marker. And then we've also put up six large directional signs, so if you're walking through the cemetery, it'll point you to where the original section is, where the Catholic section is, where the veteran section, or even, you know, first edition, second edition, third edition, so people can kind of orient themselves in the cemetery if they're looking for something specific. So that's part of our signage project, and of course, we've talked about interpretive signage, which will come a little later. We also recently, in early November, did a headstone cleaning and repair workshop with Rusty Brenner from Texas Cemetery Restoration. It was a budgeted project that we finally got to do, which was great. Mr. Brenner has done work in cemeteries all throughout Texas and all throughout the nation. He came and taught our staff in the Community Services Division and the Cemetery Department, and then a few volunteers, how you repair headstones that have completely snapped in half or are not level anymore, or even the very large monuments that you see kind of sliding and drifting. He taught us how to fix those, what materials to use, what tools. We had a lot of fun and learned a lot despite the fact that it rained for about three hours on us while we were out there. But the great thing is he taught our Cemetery Department all of these things, and now they can do it on a regular basis. I think since that workshop, they've worked on 10 or 12 headstones that were laying on the ground and were actually getting covered up, because that happens eventually, got those out of the ground and stood them back up because now they know how to do it. In the future, we'd like to bring back Mr. Brenner, hopefully on an annual basis, to work on some of the headstones and monuments that are huge, that require a lot of bigger equipment that we don't necessarily have, and I don't have enough training to do that sort of stuff. So we're going to hopefully bring him back. Also, the last thing I presented to you all about was the Nacogdoches Railroad Depot Exhibits. Council approved a contract with Exhibit Concepts out of Ohio. We are full steam ahead, if you'll forgive the railroad pun. I had to throw it at them, it's in there somewhere. But we had our initial meeting with Exhibit Concepts. They came down and met with Brian and I to see the building, to take pictures, measurements, really just kind of get an idea of how we've used a building in the past, what exhibits and events we've done, like the Model Train Show, and how we kind of envisioned what it would look like in the future. So we met with them, and they've sent us our first design schematic. It doesn't go over content or what photos will be in there, but more of, here are like the big topics we'd like to include that from us, they understood were important, how the flow of the exhibit would look, and then kind of colors, fonts, what they thought the artifact cases could look like, what panels, what size they would be, because they had quite a big project, because we told them, you know, we want panels with text, but you can't attach it to a wall, and we had to be able to move it for exhibit, so they, they really took all of that and created a really cohesive design. We sent back a few edits, and that will be something we can use for some public input, whether it's putting out a poll online, putting it on Facebook, doing open houses, to get the people of Nacogdoches to come tell us, you know, I think you missed a big topic, or I have a photograph that would go great, or here's a story you could include. So it's really something we can use as a big jumping off point. We thought they did a great job, and we're very excited about that project. So those are the last of our big ongoing projects. We do a lot with Historic Sites Department with a very small staff. We have a great group of partners that we're happy to have, and we all really love what we're doing and are happy to be doing it. So as always, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have, or if you have any comments or suggestions about things we're doing or things you think we should do, I'd be happy to take note of that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment or a suggestion or a question for Ms. Sal? Okay, hearing none. Counsel? Questions, comments? No?
I'd just like to say thanks for everything you do, and especially all the little activities. And I know a lot of people have told me how much they like what y'all do, and also the library and all the things that are done at the library, all the little bitty things that make a, you know, the library is also really great.
They are. They are wonderful. We're always happy to partner with them, and those, those people work so hard. So I'm happy to be lumped in with them as well, that's always good. But thank you, I appreciate it. We love what we do.
Yeah, well, thank you, and please thank your staff, too, because it takes a very special person to love and care for our historic sites, and we're happy you're there.
Well, thank you, and I will pass that along to them. I know they'll appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Of course. Okay, we are not having executive session, so that concludes our meeting of December 4th. So thank you all for coming.